I'm gonna gavel this a little early here. That'll give me an opportunity to get disposed of the rules and procedures. I'd like to welcome everybody to the City of Des Moines Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for November 1st, 2012. Just to get the rules and procedures out of the way, the Planning and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make final decisions on all matters before the commission other than site plans. The commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan is the final decision by the city unless the applicant appeals to City Council. So you'll need to contact the city clerk or community development department staff -- wow, I did that right -- for details on those council hearings. This evening, the applicant will be given 10 minutes to present their request after presentation by staff. Proponents and then opponents are allowed to speak with each speaker, allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and after motion, the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the issue under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda, and we'll get to those in a minute. One of them, I think, will be coming off because there's a continuance request. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. To better serve you when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-283-4209 should special accommodations be required. Assisted listening devices are available for meetings inside the council chambers as well. The Planning and Zoning Commission meetings are broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7 for customers with that service, and they're also broadcast -- or actually streamed live in real time on the City of Des Moines website at www.dmgov.org. Click "Watch Live" on that link, although you won't be here, and we encourage you to be here. Kathy, do we have a quorum? A quorum being present. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your -- I'll take your motion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. I want to -- I want abstention. Okay. I do want to thank Greg last week for -- or last time for his filling in for me. My -- I had kind of a crisis and had to get out of here, so thank you, Greg. I really want to thank you. Appreciate your assistance. Jason, I understand that number one has been requested for a continuance. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
And I also understand that number three has been requested for a continuance?
Yes, both of these to November 15th, the next meeting.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on either item number one or item number three? Let me read those so everybody will understand. Item number one is a request from SPTIHS Property Trust, represented by David Hagerty to rezone property located at 2401 East 8th Street. Is there anyone here to speak on that item? Seeing none? Is there anyone here to speak on the request from Available Materials Handling LLC, represented by Anthony Holt, to rezone property located at 607 Southeast 21st Street? Anyone here to speak on that item? Are you in opposition, sir?
I am. I'm Joel Tampelman. I am in opposition, but we don't have any objection to the request for a continuance.
Okay, all right. And I'll repeat that. He indicated that he did not have any objection to the request for a continuance. Is there a motion to continue both these matters?
No.
Okay, we're moving by committee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. Okay. Are there items we want to put onto the request agenda?
Number six.
Number six? Everybody had a chance to look at number six? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to item number six? Let me read it for you. It's a request from Kaidnig, Inc., 2102 Southeast 14th Street. Oh, man. Represented by Timothy Nugent for a vacation of an irregular shape segment of right-of-way from the south edge of Grattis Avenue extending from southeast 14th Street to a point approximately 115 feet to the west to allow for an ongoing encroachment of a vehicle display lot that occurs -- that occurred circa 2001. The proposed segment of the right-of-way is entirely south of the existing traveled width and sidewalk in Grattis Avenue. Everybody understand that one? Is there any questions? Is there any opposition? Seeing none? All those in favor of moving item number six to the consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. So we're gonna take up item two and item six. Let me read item two. I just read item six. City Council initiated request for re -- to rezone property located at 900 Mulberry Street. And then item number six, which I previously read. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to either one of those items? Either one of those items? Seeing none? All those in favor, please -- did I ask for -- I'm getting ahead of myself, aren't I? Okay. Staff loves it. We're -- not all staff, I'm sorry, Ken. Should I slow down? Anyway. Jackie's motion. CJ's motion. CJ, you had a question, I think.
I have a question on item two. I'm in support of it, but I just want to know who determines the allocation for the theater, the restaurant, and the nightclub? Or is this a variable venue, or how is that going to be determined of space, allocation of space?
Basically, it would be the developer, and then as part of their development agreement, there would be a proposal for what they were intending for square footages of uses. There could be some flexibility in there for variation in that, but in general, they would just need to be in compliance with their development agreement and current zoning, so.
That's already been greened.
The development agreement.
Are we good, CJ? Jackie, thanks for bailing me out. Okay. Everybody understand the motion?
Moving consent.
Moving consent. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Thanks, Ted. Ooh, went back. Okay. Moving on to item number four. It's a request from Raven Garnew to re -- Garnew? Garnell? Garnell? Depends upon where in Louisiana they're from. Is that it? Garnell to rezone property located at 2324 Southwest 9th Street. Jason, are you presenting on this one?
Yes, I have passed.
Thank you, sir.
Response cards on. Chair, members of the commission, Jason Van Essen with the city's planning staff. The response card's going around. Before you use the response map, I'm gonna go ahead and just kinda go through the aerial and photographs of the site, and then we'll get into the staff recommendation. So, here's an aerial. The property is on the northwest corner of Southwest 9th and Kirkwood Avenue. It's Zone C1, and there is some C1 zoning in the area, but there's pretty much single-family development around it until you get further to the south. This map might be a little easier to see zoning in the area, the pink being C1, and then some R4 and single-family, and CO or C0 on the -- to the east along the 9th Street Subject property, looking to the north, the intersection. Looking back towards the west. And then a photograph of the rear. This property's pretty small. There's also some other irregularities around here where their property line ekes into this driveway, so it's pretty close proximity. We did get a site sketch from the applicant. If the rezoning is approved and they move forward their project, they would be required to submit a site plan for review that meets all the site plan standards and requirements, site plan ordinance, landscaping to the extent possible, stormwater, any of those sorts of regulations. So you can see, they're generally, their thought is to leave the site as -- pretty much as is. Couple of conditions that are noted in the staff report that would need to be addressed is right now it's paved all the way to the sidewalks. It's actually -- the pavement's actually into the right-of-way, and that would need to be removed. And then our zoning ordinance requires a five-foot setback from wherever their property line is for parking. Now, that may create some deficiencies in movement space, but that would be something that would -- the applicant would have to go through our zoning board adjustment process to make it all work, so. Parking-wise, we don't have specifics with regard to the number of employees. They anticipate parking standards for this type of use are based on the number of employees. You have to have a three offspace -- or, excuse me, parking spaces, plus one per employee. They are showing possibly four, so it seems reasonable that that could work. Other comments, really with regard to reviewing this from the staff standpoint of making a recommendation, you know, we looked to the community character plan to give us guidance on this rezoning. This does not require a land use plan amendment, but there is other language in the plan that we should keep in mind as we look at rezonings, and that has to do with the mixing, blending of residential, commercial uses, buffering, how you accomplish that. And I won't read in detail in the staff report. There's several paragraphs in the -- our community character plan. But where that led us to is making a recommendation of denial for a rezoning. Felt this site is too small for C2 zoning. C2 zoning is really a highway-oriented, larger lot development kind of zoning district. The intensity of uses that are allowed in the C2 district. Felt that the existing C1 zoning in this area along -- mixes well with the R160, the C0, which is basically an office, small office, district classification, and then some multifamily. That C1 zoning makes more sense. We did point out in the staff report that the applicant does have the ability to go to the board to seek a use variance. You cannot seek a use variance until zoning has been denied. This was built as a commercial property. There are a lot of uses in the C1 district that would be allowed by right, but certainly they might be able to make their case that this particular C2 use would make sense through that process. But we felt from a zoning standpoint, it did not make sense to put C2 at this particular location. Yes, sir?
Jason, let me ask you something. They can't run a plumbing business out of this as a C1?
No, it's classified as a C2 use.
Is there a reason for that?
Um, that's just the way the ordinance -- I don't know if, Mike, you want to shed any light on that, but that's the way the ordinance reads.
Typically, with contractor offices and things like that in general, there's concerns about potentially outdoor storage and things like that that might be associated with it, so that's why it's a C2 use under our code.
So it's the outdoor storage we're looking at, not necessarily the practice itself?
Theoretically.
Yeah, theoretically.
Anything else, Jason? I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions? Is the applicant here? Could you please come forward, give us your name and address?
My name is Raymond Garnew. 1315 John Street, Des Moines, Iowa. I also own Range Plumbing and Heating and Air Conditioning. I'd like to thank the council for -- zoning commission for listening to my comments there. Basically, this building was built as a gas station. It was a gas station for 40-something years with a service bay. It's been vacant for over three years now, I think. The last thing -- last people that were in there were some kind of a consignment shop and a -- I think they did a -- there might have been a sewing shop. I really don't know the history of the whole building, but my first purchase of this building, I bought it with the idea of putting an office in there, and basically, I bought it because I wanted to put the service door back into it because it has a bay in it where I can go to the office, do some paperwork, make some phone calls, and then take my service truck and leave and go do the work that I normally do. Most of my service truck I have usually got about $25,000 or $30,000 on it between tools and equipment, and its main reason is to get it off the street. As far as storage, I'm not sure what the zoning's looking at as far as storage goes, but basically for storage, it's going to be parts, and it is zoned for office and retail. Well, retail in the plumbing business, you have probably a water heater or sump pumps, and you have pipes and nipples and fittings that somebody might come in and ask for. And then I projected at the preliminary hearing that I'd like to do some small repair. Talking to the neighbors in the neighborhood, they were all agreeable with it so that they could have a place to go to get parts. Most of your plumbing shops today are getting to be a thing of the past, and most people go into the big box stores, but they don't carry everything in the oddball stuff that people need. I wasn't planning on really running a retail business out of it. Mostly, it was just gonna be office and my own personal use. Be able to park my truck and leave and go do my thing and come back. And when I went to the preliminary hearing, they suggested that I change it to C2 because, like the gentleman here said, that it's not really zoned for plumbing. But the plumbing shop that I'm designing to do is not -- I'm not sure what they mean by plumbing, but the small repair would be fixing faucets or taking a pump or pot on a workbench, and no different than if you go to one of the Miller Hardware stores or one of their places, and you go in and buy a parts, you bring a window and they repair the window. Or you go to a shoe store and you bring your shoes in and they repair it. It's just different kind of materials that you're working with. It's not a matter of having jackhammers and walters and all that kind of stuff going on that you might do on a job site. It's been retailed for a number of years, and it's on the busy street, and there's -- it is a small lot. The house to the west of me is infringing on the property line. I've used their driveway, and it's actually, I think, about 18 feet to the west of the building or something in that neighborhood, where we was gonna project in putting a privacy fence so that I could park a trailer back there, coming back from a job when I need to use it. Most of the stuff is on the trailer, so there wouldn't be a lot of storage or anything at that particular location as far as debris outside of it. Be a place back there to put your trash bucket, and it would be behind the fence where it wouldn't be an eyesore to any of the neighbors or disrupt any of the services, I don't believe. As far as the retail business goes, my hours are gonna be very limited. It's basically gonna be for me to be in there in the morning and be gone, so there's not gonna be a whole lot of traffic created by this. And if somebody comes or calls me or people that I know, they're gonna call me and I'll probably beat them there for a part or something. But as far as -- when it was a gas station, it had to be 10 times the traffic and the use of that building at that time that went on for 40 years that nobody ever complained about it. So the little business that I'm trying to put in there, and basically changing it to C2, just lets me put the trailer there and do some of the small repair on faucets, which is going to benefit that neighborhood. That neighborhood's got a number of old homes and old houses that require plumbing services and the nature of the kind of work that I do. I talked to both the neighborhood associations, and they were real positive on the fact that it was gonna be something like that that would benefit the neighborhood and also would put this building back into use and put it back on the tax roll and make it, you know, presentable and -- so basically, that's all I have to say about it. I mean, I don't know, it's kind of new business for me doing this kind of stuff.
Any questions?
Yeah, Ray, do you have any employees?
No, not at this time.
So you have no employees?
Mostly, even though I work with subcontractors.
So that doesn't impact on your parking requirements at all?
No.
How about your storage? Is there anything to be stored outside, or is it all on your truck, or?
Basically, it would only be the trailer that I usually -- when I do southside work, I have a trailer that I put barricades of plywood shoring, and I put it all on that trailer. And then when I go to a job site, I haul the trailer and take it off of it, leave the trailer on the job site. Instead of trying to load them up and store them and pick them up, unload them, they're always on the trailer for me.
But there's no other?
No, then I have another trailer that I haul some stuff with. It's like a -- actually, it's a dump box that you pull behind and you put gravel in a rock.
And those would be -- you want those behind the building? Is that what?
Well, occasionally, I might want to park it there in between jobs or going from one place to the next, but that would be behind the privacy fence that I'm gonna build that they would require me to do that would be back in there, would be out of sight. It's nothing that sticks up in the air. It's just, you know, it's basically just a trailer.
Okay. So the parts you're talking about are just little things that you could put on a workbench and?
Yeah, that's the small things. It's just something you take a hammer to or beat on it or a couple wrenches and take it apart and oil it down, and so there's nothing major that -- and then putting my vehicle inside in the evenings is just so that I can occasionally have some tools. Since it's a service bay, I do some -- for instance, I'll give you an example. When you do gas pipe work, I have a pipe threader that's a portable device that will occasionally use it, but we don't need it on the truck all the time to jump over it, keep moving it around, so we would probably put that in there with some of -- but that is one example as a tool that we would put in the service bay, and if we need to use it, we'd put it back on the truck and take it to the job, and we could then -- we'd unload it just so we don't have to keep hauling it all around. And there's some other oddball tools, like big pipe wrenches that you do on a certain job that you don't need in the truck every day, that would be hanging in there, and basically it's to get the truck off the street, off the parking lot, so it's not broken into and stuff.
If the property is rezoned, what kind of alterations would you need to do to the exterior and the interior of the building for your business?
Well, the inside, right now, is gutted, so it's gotta be completely renewed, rewired, replumbed.
It shows here on the plan that I'm looking at some demising walls, though.
Those are his proposed.
Oh, that's proposed?
Well, that's what's -- that's basically what's there now. We just brought a new sewer and water line into the building, so it's got new sewer and water into the building, but the old plumbing was old, and so we were tearing it out and redoing it also. There'd be a new stool and a new lavatory and...
So this is what you propose to do on the interior?
Yeah, completely -- be completely redone, rewired, and new furnace and air conditioner in it and...
Then what do you do briefly -- what would you propose to do briefly on the exterior of the building?
Well, we want to put the service door back into it, an overhead door, and then a new service -- a new entrance door, and there's a side door there that would be replaced. The parking lot was already where the water and sewer line was put in until the north side of the lot. It's been all repaved, half of it there. We're down the road eventually, we repaved that, and then there's a sign there. We were planning on building a flower bed around the sign, so there'd be some green stuff there. And then to the north of the lot, we have three feet there before you get off the parking lot, we were gonna plant about four or five evergreen trees in there for a buffer zone a little bit, give that a little bit of green area right there.
Could we look at the -- Jason, your images of the building, please?
Sure. I've got some here that could pass around.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great, too.
I can use the...
Okay. This one, this one shows what I plan on doing with the doors.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
You said that this was originally a gas station, which I believe absolutely without question. It's on a -- was on a and still is a very important trafficway in the city. Of course, it's built in a Tudor Revival style, which at this time, I suppose it was built in the 1920s or perhaps the late or the early 1930s. The idea was for a building in a residential -- a commercial building in a residential area should blend in to the residential area, and so this looks like a house intentionally.
Well, at one time, I believe it was what I call a shack, and then it had a restroom behind it, and it was just where they -- there was an attendant there, they're waiting on the gas. You know, they just went into a little hut, and then they built the service area with the other A-frame was a service bay where they changed oil and did work on the cars. And then somewhere along the line in between there, they tied the two together and put an addition onto it, so there's a walkway through there that combined the two buildings.
My suggestion is if the property is rezoned and you do put your business there, that you look at the building and its original design very carefully and try in the alterations that you might do to the building, be as sympathetic as possible to the building itself because for your business, which has a lot of residential attraction for it, a building that's good-looking, that looks like it was originally designed, is going to be a good advertisement for the kind of service that you offer.
Any other questions? Mr. Garnell, I'm concerned that this is going to a C2, not because you would use it any other way than what you're talking about is plumbing, but if we go to C2, that means all those general retail uses are gonna be allowed.
Well, is there a way to go to C2 with some restrictions that was recommended to me?
Well, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking, if you go before the zoning board of adjustment, you're gonna get that -- probably get that relief that you're looking for. And that way, we don't have to worry about a C2 property in the middle of a residential area.
Well, I'm only going by what I was suggesting to do.
I understand.
So, I mean, this is all kind of new to me, but they then suggested that we go to C2 with some restrictions that will follow the building.
Great.
Dan, I agree. I'm uncomfortable taking this to C2. I think that's -- the map that Jason had just wouldn't allow it. I think this, from your description, sounds like a good thing to do here, so again, I think the process must seem to be -- well, I would propose to turn it down and then take it to the board of adjustment and encourage them to find a way to make it happen.
That doesn't mean everybody's saying no to you. That just means that you have another step that you have to take.
Well, what I understand from it, basically, the only thing that the C2 does is let me do the repair work inside the building. No, I'm not gonna be doing a whole lot of repair work. I mean, I haven't done that for years, so it's not really a big issue with me as far as having to do it, but it's just to accommodate the neighborhood because of the people that requested it, and people that I've talked to in the neighborhood were, you know, said were happy that something like that would be available to them.
Yeah, okay. Do you have anything else?
I think you could also allow the outdoor storage. That's where I'm having heart...
Yeah, I think that's right.
Actually, the C2 does not allow the outdoor storage, so...
The C1 does?
They would -- no. M1 would be outdoor storage for equipment and things like that. If he has his trailer and other equipment out there, so...
What do hardware stores do?
Well, in this instance, he would have to -- if you're basically a contractor's storage yard, storing equipment, trailers, you know, sometimes, not that maybe he does, but sometimes a contractor's storage would be like a Bobcat, things like that stored outside. It's not a whole lot different than the snow blower and lawnmower request you had just maybe about a month ago in front of you, and even at that time, they'd asked for a C2 zoning on that. There was other C2 zoning in the area in that instance, but I think we pointed out that that would probably also require a variance for the outdoor storage component. So I think regardless whether you approve this zoning or not, the use that he's describing is gonna require some sort of relief from the board of adjustment. So the question really is, at this point, they've not proposed any limitations on other uses in the C2. It wasn't part of their application. You could make a motion to put conditions and, you know, say C2, subject to only these uses if you want to as part of your motion, but...
He's still got that sort of outside storage.
Yeah.
Let's see if there's anyone else who wants to...
Anything else?
No, basically, that covers what I had to say.
Is there anyone else? I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Sir, you can sit down, and we'll... Anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? In opposition to the application? Likewise, seeing none. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I just have a question. If we turn it down and then he goes for the use variance and they turn that down, what's his remedy?
Well, he could -- under the code, if you're denied a zoning request, you'd have to submit some sort of a modified proposal within -- or wait a year to come in for a new rezoning application.
Motion?
I'd like to move staff and...
I'd like to move staff, and I don't know if we want to pull the, the commission, but I for one would be supportive of him if he were to go to Board of Adjustment. And I'd like somehow to convey that to the Board of Adjustment. I don't know what that vehicle is, but.
I don't know if we can do that because that's a, that is a judicial, judicial process versus a legislative one, which is.
Well, I just spoke my piece. I, I think they should support.
I think your motion, if, if that's the case, could be that you're recommending denial because you believe it's more appropriate as a use variance application.
And Kathy's going to make notation of that, right Kathy? Thank you. We're getting in the back door, Mike. Joy?
My only thought is that he has got such a limited use in his, in his plan, that I'm wondering if just leaving it C1 and, and that's what we're doing by denying him the request? Okay, and he would then go to, yeah?
Is there any Board of Adjustment who get the relief that he's looking for?
Board of Adjustment, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclimation, Kenny. Thank you.
Does the applicant understand?
That's what we're, that's what I was about to tell you. Sir, you understand that at this juncture, you now want to, and I'm sure staff will help you, talk to staff and they'll indicate to you that you need to now go before the zoning Board of Adjustment for relief. They will give you the sort of things that you're looking for, limited type of changes from what the, what the zoning actually is.
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah. Mike keeps telling me potentially, potentially.
The other thing to clarify, too, is that you cannot seek a use variance until you've been denied a rezoning request. Let's emphasize that.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five. Request from Smith Home Restorations, represented by Troy Smith, to rezon property located at 2040 East Walnut Street. Jason, you're presenting on this one?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Before we get started with the presentation, I'm going to pass around some cards and a communication from the Neighborhood Association. So this is the response map. This is an aerial showing the subject property. It's on the north side of East Walnut Street, just to the west of East 21st. The area is kind of a transition. There's predominantly small lots, single-family dwellings or houses, layman term, to the north and to the east. They have industrial uses, kind of wrapping around to the south and west around the railroad tracks. This is a photograph looking directly at the property. You can see it's kind of a garage-type building. The rest of the block predominantly is, is houses that show up here until you get, like I said, until you get down close to the tracks and the transitions to industrial uses. This is a case very similar to the one that we just had. So it's kind of convenient in a way that we've kind of wrapped our mind around some of those questions about use variances and amending or changing zoning. This one is a little different than it would require an amendment to the future land use plan. The, the future land use plan for the area does show a, a single-family, low-density, single-family residential in this area. So it would require that amendment. The applicant has proposed to use this building for a couple of different uses that are listed in the agenda. This is a case where other points about this case, there's, no, there hasn't been a grandfathered use established here at one time. The last thing that the city has any record of is a television repair business in the 80s. The applicant has indicated that there had been a plumbing shop there when they bought it, but we have not been able to find any evidence of that, and they haven't provided any. We've even gone to, you know, look at utility information and haven't found anything to date. So at this point, there's no record of any grandfather rights, so it's lost legal nonconforming rights to any commercial use. It's zoned, single-family, so the only legal use of it at this point would be single-family use. These are very small lots. I believe they're all 40 feet wide. Once again, this is another question about transition of uses, proper, proper separation and screening from residential uses. And kind of the same part of the community character plan guided us in this recommendation as well. And once again, we are recommending denial of this request. Just as the previous applicant, they do have the ability to go to the Board if their rezoning request is denied. If it is approved, they would need to submit a, a site plan and go through our official site plan review process where parking and setbacks and landscaping would be looked at. Happy to answer your questions.
Any questions? Any questions? Jason, I note from this that they're parking, whatever, they're parking in the front yard here, right?
They're.
Is that, is that part of the zoning request? Is it?
You know, that parking is, I mean, they're, they're operating without an established use, so I guess you could call it illegally operated commercial business. But certainly, any area that was going to be used, if, if the rezoning is approved, they need to go through a site plan process where all parking areas are established, paved, you know, landscaped. So seek, the rezoning would not permit them to park in a grass area, is the short answer.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. The applicant's here. Please come forward, give us your name and address.
My name is Paul Gingler. I own S&amp;G Real Estate, along with Matthew Smith. And Troy Smith owns Smith Home Restorations. We've done a number of projects with, with Troy in the past, and this was another project that, that we were in the process of, of doing. And I don't know exactly how we get this. Is this a good spot? Yeah, okay, good. This was another project, and when we got this from the gentleman that was running the plumbing business out of there, it was, you know, he said.
Sir, she didn't get your address. What was your?
Oh, I'm sorry. 14274 Wildwood Drive in Clive. We got this building from the gentleman that was running the plumbing business out of the building. And he had storage in there. He didn't have retail, but he had storage. And he said, you know, I've been using this for this forever. And he said that this should be able to be extended, et cetera. Well, shame on us. We should have done like the other gentleman that was here. Of course, we should have been here talking to you a while back. Quite frankly, we weren't. And so you're going to find out what we've done with this property based on that, as well as based on when we got permits, because we spent 30-some thousand dollars on this building, okay? And we spent that money because the building needed it, okay? We needed to have this building redone, so it was a functional building. And when we talked with Les, he said, no problem. We went down to the city for permit and development. We got our permits. We got commercial permits, okay? They said, get your, these is what you'll get. You got your plumbing, you got your electrical, you got your construction. We put new beams across inside. And, which you don't see on that, but I'll show you another, another picture, because that gentleman was talking about fencing, you need a permit for fencing. No problem. We got the permits, we did the work. We thought, okay, this should be fine. Next thing you know, we're finding, no, this is not fine. It's not going to be zoned commercial. So what we're here for is to basically tell you what we think, one, what we've done, why we did it. One, we did it because of the permits. If you're going to issue permits for a commercial venture, logic would tell me that you see it as being a commercial venture. Otherwise, I would think you'd put the brakes on and say, hold up, folks, hold up. You don't want to get a commercial permit here. You've got R160 zoning. You can't use this thing for commercial. That wasn't the instructions that we were given. That's not how we operate it.
Well, sir, let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Who owns the title on this particular property?
Right now, Troy does.
Okay. And, and who would have the ability to know what the zoning is on the title?
I suppose that Troy would.
Yeah, thank you.
So, yeah, I wouldn't need you to believe anything else, other than that. So anyway, the other thing that we're looking at in terms of the property and the zoning is this property has, and you saw on the graph, has four houses between it and other commercial buildings. There's four houses in between there, okay? And there's commercial on the other side, all right? That's one thing. Another thing is, we thought it was important to understand the neighbors and the neighborhood. We went before the Fair Board Neighborhood Association. We presented all our information. They were all very much in favor of it. More importantly, we talked to the neighbors, the people all the way around the building, especially the people next door. They were thrilled. I talked to the gentleman next door today and he said, Paul, he said, I've been here since the early 60s, and this building has always been used for some form of commercial use. We're fine with that. In fact, quite frankly, we're thrilled with it. Because when you came in, the building was certainly not looking very good. What would happen to it? I really don't know. I know what happens to houses because we have rehabbed a dozen nuisance properties on the east side, okay? We did all this with private money. We had no supplemental funds, okay? And we rehabbed those houses. We basically rehabbed this one. If you look at it, you can see the size of it. It's like an oversized garage. So when we got feedback from the neighbor, he said, we think it's a good deal. It looks good. It enhances our property value. If that didn't happen, what would happen to it? I don't know. I would assume it would continue to deteriorate, and at some point, it would be declared a nuisance, and eventually, it may be torn down. I can't tell you. But if it's not going to be a commercial property, do we think that someone's going to tear the building down and build a house in there? Highly unlikely. So what we're thinking is, as a commercial property, it's good for the neighbors. They're not living next door to any trash or junk. It's good for the neighborhood, and it's good for the city. It's back on the tax rolls, and whoever uses it is paying taxes on it. So, you know, that's basically where we're coming from. It's important that the property be zoned commercial, because as I'm sure you folks know, if it's not zoned commercial, you can't get a rebuild letter, you can't get insurance, you really can't function effectively out of the building. So that's, that's a very key point. Now, we're certainly open to some form of, you know, restrictive zoning. We don't have, you know, a problem with that. If you're, if you're looking to have this zone so there's not a lot of traffic, it's not made into a, a restaurant or something that's going to generate a lot of traffic, we understand that. The property was, did have plumbing storage in it. It would be very logical for a small plumber. It'd be very logical for an electrician. You know, it could be good for someone who was in the contracting business. Those are the types of uses that it would be, could be effectively used for. But again, all those uses come into play. The fence that we talked about, I'll just show you. Give you an idea of what we've done to the facility. The, here's an example of the back of the building. I mean, we've even gone so far as to, you'll notice there, that's a gas line.
Excuse me, is this the building that we're talking about? Or is this the building that you said in another part of the city you've already rehabbed?
No, 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 this is the building we're talking about. Absolutely. So basically, that's, that's what we have. Do you have questions?
Any questions?
No questions.
Good.
Thank you.
I noticed the date on the photos.
Yes, sir.
About a year and a half ago, so this, this work's been done.
Yes, it's been done.
About a year and a half?
No, 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 this work has been done just within the last several months.
I think that says 5/8/11?
Actually, I don't know why it says that, because I think, you didn't take these photos today, didn't you?
Today.
These photos were just taken today.
You changed the battery in your camera.
Ha, is that what it is? Okay. Okay, no, the photos were just taken today. The work was completed in the last three, four months, and. What situation? Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Mike?
Actually, this is a question for Jason. Jason, did Permit Development Center staff share any comments with us about permits being issued on this project or?
Yeah, permits for, I'm aware of a couple. One, for the rear wall to be reconstructed, which is basically kind of a maintenance issue. And the other was for some interior work, which noted that a use was not, had not been determined, was it noted on that permit? I think that they were trying to allow the applicant to, you know, secure the building and do what they're doing while they're moving forward with their game plan.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
You can line up. Tony Holt, 2222 East 31st Street. Our family owns the property across the street, and also the one Ford houses down the two large industrial pieces, and we are in favor of them going commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Matthew Smith, and I'm also part of S&amp;G Real Estate. I was actually attended the pre-meeting to this event, and one of the, one of the things that we were wanting to do was, we had submitted a site plan with the proposed additional parking off the back, and the change is necessary to correspond with the C2 usage, but we can't do that until it's, until it is zoned commercial. The neighbors, we have gone above and beyond, Troy's gone above and beyond. We've provided extra parking for the neighbors and allowed them to use it, which they didn't have it before. We've had, the neighbors, we've had them come over. We've had neighborhood barbecues with the neighbors who they come over. We've got to know them. They've really become part of the process and part of the fabric of that neighborhood. Some of the people who are, one of the things that Troy had looked at was, there had been people who had approached him about interest in using the building. One was a local makers group, which is a collective of individuals. It's like an adult shop class, guys who like to do, and women who like to do handiwork, things like woodworking, working on RC cars, building computers, things like that. These are young people in their 20s to 40s who would bring some, pump some vitality into the neighborhood. These are people who are there making and doing and mingling with the people in the neighborhood. So this type of usage, not only was the building dilapidated and worn down before, it has new plumbing service, new heating, cooling, electrical siding, new rubber roof, new parking for the neighbors, where this is, this has been a boon to the neighborhood. And this is one of the reasons why you see people showing up. We have, it's become more than just a property. It's, we believe it's become a part of the neighborhood, and we believe that it will be in line with the projected plans going forward for that area. And the building, to be honest with you, has always, it has been used in a commercial setting since the early 60s. So I'm here to support the efforts that Troy's made so far, and I think the neighbors have voiced their opinion in support of it as well. And I would ask that you consider allowing this so it can continue to be used as in benefit of the neighborhood.
Joy?
Are you planning on making the use of that building, what you were describing about folks coming in and doing their things altogether, their building or whatever altogether? Is that the kind of use that you were looking for, for this building?
Yeah, and one of the things that we talked about with the pre-planning meeting is our willingness to restrict the C2 usage so that it coincides with the desires of the neighborhood of what they would like to see there. We don't want any bars. We don't want any nightclubs or whatever. Other C2 usages would be allowable. So we're willing to restrict the C2 usage so that it mirrors what the neighborhood would like to see there. So, but those are the, those are the usages that we like to see. So, but those are the, those are the usages that we like to see. Small hobby shop. Right now, it has, I believe it's classified as a small engine repair shop right now, which is why you see the little vehicles there, which if we were allowed to get the C2 usage, we could get the more parking that would be required anyways as part of the C2 usage, and that would come along with it. We've already proposed the site plan with the additional foliage on the side, the buffer zones necessary, the additional parking behind. We've already got that all mapped out, and that would be implemented as soon as the zoning change was rolled over.
Has staff received a site plan that you're talking about?
I believe the site plan was submitted down, yeah.
Hmm?
I'm wondering if the site plan would have to come before us.
No, it would not, under our code. They would have to submit it to the Permit Development Center for review administratively by staff.
Okay.
And it kind of, it's a bit of a purgatory right now, where you're in a limbo area, where you would like to see those, the next step for this property and going into its evolution and allowing those people to come in, but without getting this zoning, it's stuck. It can't get the additional parking. It can't get the classification necessary to operate as it should. And it, as Paul mentioned earlier, very difficult to get zoning if you can't get a rebuild as a commercial structure. Very difficult to get a lender to allow the additional improvements to the building to get a loan on the property if it can't be rebuilt as a commercial. So, this is really a sticky widget. We really need to get this resolved and get this zoning changed to allow this building to become at its highest and best usage, which we believe is in the C2, potentially a limited C2 juncture.
What limited uses, what are you going to limit the uses to?
We'd like to see it used as, I mean, store office and storage usage, woodworking, small engine repair, like it's classified right now, hobby, hobby work, things like that.
Okay. You also understand that you still can't store things outside?
Understand. Well, we, one of the reasons why we need this zoning change is so that we can have the parking necessary, so there wouldn't be any need to store anything outside. The vehicle that you saw up front, if we had the additional parking, those are actually all stored inside the vehicle. The only reason that vehicle was actually parked out front is they were moving the vehicles inside, and it was taken when they were being moved. But if you go by there during the day, go by there right now, there's no vehicles parked out front of the building.
Do you understand, if you're going to do any outside storage, you're still going to have to go to the zoning board of adjustment to get that waiver?
Sure, but right now, we have to get from the R-160 into a commercial classification to even get to that point.
Joan?
Um, there is a huge mix in that area of residential and commercial. What would be the objection to having this one? I mean, I've just seen, I'm thinking of a body shop right now that's set back, and there's a house that crouches over here and another one over here that's existing there now.
That would be not an informant's too.
Well, yeah, it would be, but, uh...
Do we have a zoning map?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that...
Before I do that, sir, do you have anything else you want to?
Well, I think to address that point, straight across the street is a large industrial building. Four houses down, there's another big shop that's there. The entire area is peppered with mixed usage.
Yeah.
It really is. And so, the neighbors, the reason, one of the reasons I believe that you don't see any objection is they're used to this building being used that way. They're used to the, right across, both on Walnut and Dean Avenue, that multi-use. And they're seeing a building that had been getting run down, now having new life injected in it, and they're saying, "We're already fine with how it's been used for the last 50 years. We just like seeing it being used better and being improved." So, you're right, but straight across the street here, oh...
Kathy, could you turn on the document? Kathy, please.
Maybe.
Yep. Straight across the street from the subject property right here is a large industrial building, as is this building right here, straight across right there, and the railroad tracks here. So, this is not atypical for the area. It's not as if we were going to, you know, a largely densely populated residential area and asking to make an exception. I think that'd cover it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. Anyone in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Seeing none? You need rebuttal time?
(laughing).
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I need a motion.
I have a question. Is there another zoning type that would better fit the neighborhood and allow him to do what he needs to do?
Essentially, any type of commercial zoning would require a land use plan amendment. It's, the land use plan designation is low density residential on this property currently. So...
What would the M1 allow him to do, which is right across the street?
M1 would allow even greater commercial usage of the property than what's requested.
So, that's overkill what he's asking for.
Ted?
Um, before there's any kind of motion, I, you know, I'm, uh, I think I'd like to see what some of these restricted uses might be for rezoning. I don't, we're not, there's nothing in front of us except denial. I don't particularly feel like tonight is the place to make up that list of restricted uses. I would be, I'd be happy to consider this again with the restricted uses listed and with staff maybe getting together with the applicants to see that, and maybe with the new staff recommendation. If the applicants would be amenable to...
What you're suggesting is continuance, right, Ted?
I'm suggesting a continuation.
And it would be up to the applicants as to whether or not you want to agree with that.
Can you do that?
Sure.
You can do that. Okay. Want to move to the 15th?
Yeah.
Greg, you had something?
I just want to make sure that staff can come up with something that, that we can wiggle our way through. I have somewhat of a problem putting the C2, what appears to be in the middle of an area, even though the area is peppered with stuff as it is, and M1 is across the street. So, even though I want to object to that, it's probably not as weird as the map would lead me to believe, so...
And I'm, I would have been perfectly happy to send them to the board of adjustment, but when you do talk about the insurance and some of the things that they wouldn't be able to get...
Well, they would be able to get that with the determination by the board of adjustment, right?
With the use variance. Doesn't sound like it.
Use variance will face the conflict that you're talking about.
Yeah, and the other one was gone from C1 to C2, which is commercial, and this is R-160.
R-160 to C2.
So, they wouldn't be able, they wouldn't be able to get any...
Right, right.
We can look at it.
You're looking at it?
So, continue it.
Okay.
I move continue if anybody's...
All right. How far do we want to continue it to, though?
Mike?
Mike, you have any ideas to how long? Jason, you have any?
The calendar's pretty tough to get on to the next agenda, because we're basically writing staff reports next week, so...
All right.
I would request, or hope that we could do December 6th as first meeting.
December 6th?
Is that okay?
Is that all right with you guys?
Continue to...
Okay.
Okay.
Ted, your motion's to continue to December 6th?
It is. It's exactly what it is.
There you go. Very good. Any discussion?
I have just an observation. Number one, we always need to keep in mind that zoning runs with land, not with ownership. So, while these people might be honorable and keep a good property, the next owner may not. But on the face of things, they have support of the neighbors and the neighborhood association. So, just two observations.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy, for continuing. Okay. To December 6th. Gentlemen, we'll see you back on the 6th of December.
Thank you.
Moving along, the other thing we're looking at is approval of the meeting calendar for Planning and Zoning Commission. Everybody should have a schedule of the meeting dates.
January 3rd, I thought, would come off.
So, everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
I'm also looking at, I'm sorry, March 21st. I just looked up on the internet, and March 18th to 22nd is spring break. I don't know if that affects anybody here, but if it does, it does, okay. So, maybe March 21st should come off. They've already taken July 4th off. I don't know why we can't meet July... No, I'm kidding. And then, the other one I'm looking at is November 21st, which is Thanksgiving.
Right.
I mean, Thursday.
Yeah, but I think Thanksgiving is following.
Isn't the following?
I don't think it's...
No, I think it's the 27th, because it is this year, 27th.
Not this year, but next year. It's going to be 13 or 14.
I'm sure.
Yeah, this is next year.
If it's on Thanksgiving, I'm not coming.
Yeah.
It's actually, well, it would be Thanksgiving. 21st.
Does anybody have a calendar?
Siri's going to tell him.
When is Monday, Thursday, Mr. Chair?
Oh, you're right.
Thanksgiving in 2013 is the 28th.
Thanksgiving is the 28th next year?
It's one of my heartburns, you know that.
Okay.
Boy, technology's so wonderful, isn't it?
Yes.
March 31st is Easter.
March 31st is Easter.
You're not going to have an issue.
Okay, so that's, that's fine. March 31st is Easter.
I think January 3rd and March 21st, if that's what you're doing.
So, it only means...
March 21st, Sunday, so it would be... Okay. Monday, Thursday's March 28th. So, we're okay, because...
Let me ask again. So, um...
March 28th.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Is he proposing...
So, you and I will run into a problem again?
Yes.
The only meeting we have is the 17th in January.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
And Thanksgiving 2013.
So, right now, the discussion is eliminating January 3rd and March 21st from this proposal.
January 3rd, March 21st.
And July 4th is already off.
July 4th is already off. And Thanksgiving is November 28th next year.
So, we're good.
21st is okay. Any other changes that we need to look at? Are we good?
So, if we're going to be the 3rd and 28th off? So, would be July 4th?
No.
No. It would be July 4th is actually the date.
Okay. Eliminate January 3rd, eliminate March 21st, and eliminate July 4th.
Already off?
Yep.
So, and Thanksgiving is the 28th, so we're not conflicting there either. Okay.
Good.
I'm just going to ask everybody's vote on, are you in favor of whatever we've already laid out? The dates that Mike talked about. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. We're just confirming it. Opposed? All right, we're good, Kathy.
What were the three that were blocked out?
Uh, we're blocked out the 21st. We're taking off. January 3rd, we're taking off, and July 4th, we're taking off. July 4th is already taken off. January 3rd, we're taking off.
March 21st.
And March 21st.
This is our...
Got it? Well... Okay. The other thing I want to bring up before we, before I turn it over to Mike, is we need to have a nominating committee set up. Did you do that last year, Greg?
Joel did.
Joel? Oh, wow, ouch. Ted, you want to do that?
No.
(laughing) Whoa, that'll head, that'll... Anybody else want to handle the nominating committee? Okay, CJ, you're going to do it. You're going to do it with Ted?
Sure.
Okay.
He said no.
I'm out.
You're done?
No, no, I don't want to do that.
He said he doesn't want. He doesn't want me to be a... I won't be on your committee.
No, no, that's not...
No, no, no. He doesn't want to do it.
They're doing, they only do about, oh, you're only about four.
All those in favor of CJ? No, I'm king. CJ...
It's a committee.
Yeah, it is.
It's a committee.
You can select whoever you want.
Okay, well, you do it.
No, you're doing it, but I'm just, I'm just going to say yes to it.
He'll be, he'll be part of the committee, is what he said. Us, for Greg and me and...
Three officers.
Who are they?
There's a chair.
Greg and Mike.
First, Mike second.
I'd like to move this. I'll move that slate.
Anyway, we have to do that. That's part of our bylaws, so I just, I just...
Do you have your first meeting?
Yeah. Let's just...
(laughing) We take that up. When is it, December?
Just, if you get two, couple people...
I will. Okay.
CJ and Shirley and...
Will pay.
Do you have our email, CJ? Do you have our email addresses?
And when is the one?
Just ask Kathy. She'll get them out for you.
Where was Shirley?
No one for Shirley.
Okay.
A couple things.
Are we good? Mike?
Just a couple things, real quick. Staff has been at the Iowa APA Conference on Ames yesterday and today and tomorrow, so we came back tonight for the meeting. It was great to be here.
That's great.
Missing the reception.
Um...